Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. My name is Laura Lynn Wyatt, and if you have not met me yet, I am the General Manager for the Stallion Springs Community Services District. I've been in the position about a year and a half after Vanessa Stevens' retirement. I wanted to tell you a little bit about what we're here for today. We're here to share with you a little bit about what it's like to live within a special district, what special districts are, and how they're funded, and then we'll get into a little bit about why we need extra police tax, and a little bit about our police department. So we're going to start with a short video that does some of the introduction for you. Special districts are the smallest, most accessible form of government. There are thousands of special districts in the state of California and 164 in Kern County. Only five districts in the state have police departments. Two of those five are right here in Tehachapi, Bear Valley Springs, and Stallion Springs. Most special districts throughout the state provide one or two services to a community, such as water, park and recreation, sewer, healthcare, or fire protection. Stallion Springs is a unique special district in that it operates eight departments. Special districts are funded by charging fees for services provided, such as water, sewer, or trash. They also receive a small portion of property taxes allocated by the county, and funds from special assessments or taxes approved by voters. They do not receive any income from state sales tax or gas tax. In some cases, additional funding can come from grants or donations.
Hello, everybody. It's Gary Crowell, the Chief of Stallion Springs Police Department. I just want to take the time to talk about our ballot measure that is in August of this year. In small communities like ours, the police department plays an essential role in maintaining public safety, building community trust, and responding quickly to emergencies. While larger cities may debate reforms or restructuring, our local force remains a trusted and deeply integrated part of our daily lives.
Being in Stallion Springs, we do have a personal relationship with the officers. They're part of our family. They're not just policemen.
When they come into the store, we just start talking to everyone as just the residents besides their just being the police officers.
I've been in Stallion Springs for 32 years. I've raised kids here, and I was always thankful they had an eye on my children and the community, and the teenagers, and the people.
Preserving the police department ensures that our town has immediate access to trained professionals, understanding the needs of our residents. Our officers know the people that they serve, often knowing the officers and the community by name, which fosters both accountability and compassion.
There are family men that provide a service beyond being policemen.
People call for help with heart attacks, medical problems, domestic disputes, hostage, you wouldn't believe, suicide, someone trying to commit suicide. They're there. They are there, and they manage it. They don't fail.
Anytime we've had a situation around the church, we've always had response time, I mean, even within five minutes. And so we know we can count on them to show up, and even if we had someone in crisis.
This community-based model of policing helps prevent crime through early intervention, builds strong community relations through youth and schools, enhances coordination with local services. Rather than disbanding or outsourcing services, we should invest in increasing training, modernizing our equipment, and community engagement programs that enhance the department's ability to serve us effectively.
And if they don't have the manpower, if they don't have the right equipment, it puts them at risk. It may put residents at risk because they can't do their job properly.
Other police departments have computers in their cars. Our CSD cannot afford, and our funding currently cannot afford, to buy computers for our officers. We need to be able to attract new officers, young officers, who are interested in growing their careers, not taking a position here for a few months and then moving on because it simply does not pay enough.
Currently, I have five friends that have lost their husbands, and response time's important, obviously, when you're living alone, and older. The thought of them not having that resource is not good.
If we did not have local Stallion Springs police, and we had to rely on other agencies to come and help us, we're just looking at a longer response time.
It might take hours before you get another agency out here to deal with your situation or issue you're having.
We're safe because they're here, and we don't have the level of crime you see in the big cities, but that's because they're here.
The goal is not just to preserve the department, but to continuously improve it so it remains responsive, fair, and deeply connected to the people it protects. Thank you.
I want to share with you all that the filming of that video and the editing, everything, was 100% donated to the Stallion Springs Police Department, and I think they did an excellent job. It's a beautiful video. So there will be plenty, plenty of time for questions and answers towards, at the end of the presentation. I want to apologize, as you probably have all observed, Chief Crowell is not here. He does plan on attending as many of these town halls as he possibly can, and he may appear at some moment, but unfortunately, with the staffing levels the way that they are, he was called out to go to respond to an incident. So he's on a call right now. Okay, so we learned a lot about a special district a few minutes ago, and we learned a little bit about how they're funded. So the governance and accountability of a special district. There's a Board of Directors, a board of five. They are elected by the residents of Stallion Springs. Or, in some cases, they can be appointed by the other elected officials to fill the remainder of a term. How that happens is sometimes someone will move outside of the district boundary before their term is up, so they can no longer serve, so then an appointment would be made to fill the remainder of that term. Sunshine laws ensure special districts remain transparent and accountable to their communities. Open public meetings in accordance with the Brown Act, public records with finance and compensation posted online, annual audits by third-party, and required ethics training. So how is Stallion Springs Police Department funded? The Stallion Springs Police Department is a department of a special district. Special districts do not receive sales tax or gas tax funding from the city, county, state, or federal government. SSPD operates only through property taxes, voter-approved assessments, SLEF, which is some state funding that trickles down, grants, and donations. There's currently a special parcel tax on your property tax bill. Each property tax owner with, or sorry, each property owner within the district boundary of Stallion Springs currently pays $50 per year per parcel for police services. This generates approximately $122,000 a year. Why did I emphasize "approximately"? Because not everyone pays their taxes on time, so that number can fluctuate. Here's an example of a property tax bill. I randomly pulled an address on Bold Venture to use as the example, and then you'll see at the bottom there, that is your SSPD's tax of the $50. Why does it say $50.22, I think a lot of you are probably wondering? Because the county of Kern taxed on a processing fee to us of that 22 cents. So why is there cause for concern? Why are we here today? Officers are leaving the department for higher salaries. SSPD has lost five officers in the last five years to other departments. Currently, the officers do not have the tools to do their job effectively. Officer safety is of great concern. The department is no longer competitive in hiring or retaining officers. The police department is at critical staffing levels. So what's the value of local policing? And we touched a little bit about that in the video, right? But the value of local policing, community relationships, tailored policing, greater accountability, fast localized response times, local knowledge, prevention and proactive approaches, increased presence for the deterrence of crime. So the operating budget of local surrounding police departments, and I'm going to go ahead and if it's okay, Fred, if I can turn this over to you. This is Fred Wheeler. He is a retired law enforcement officer, a longtime Stallion resident, and he served recently on our Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. I guess when you answer the phone, everyone's, well, you get picked to do something. Anyways, yeah, so I'm retired from law enforcement, 25 years. I worked for two different agencies, Long Beach Police Department for 11 years, and 14 years with Kern County Sheriff's Office here. So, okay, am I on the video? Okay, ah, I don't know, out of frame. That was done on purpose, I was sliding out. So anyways, a longtime resident, 21 years here. I've got four generations of my family here in Stallion Springs, from my mom to us, my kids, my grandkids. So is this important to me? Absolutely, as a community member. So we got together with this, the Public Safety Committee, there's other, there's, I don't know how many total people, 20-plus people probably on the committee, broken up into different groups. We were put on the strategy side, the strategic planning side, and on that group, there's other law enforcement. We had probably 100 years of law enforcement officers' experience in that room, so that people that have managed departments and knows about the budgets and how they work and how it takes to recruit somebody and hire somebody and all those things. So we've got a really good group of talented people in this committee, and then businessmen that come in with a different idea of how the money works and things like that. So this is the budgets of local police departments. As you can see, Stallion is at, we're operating at $800,000 a year approximately. Tehachapi, they're at like 20 officers, right? Arvind's at about 20 also, Cal City's about 15, and Bear Valley's at nine, I think they're budgeted for, and that Bear Valley cost, price doesn't include their gate, which is an additional $700,000 that they have to absorb for the gate itself, a year. So, and Bear Valley's kind of going through the same thing we're going through with cost and recruiting. So we kind of came up with the three categories that we focused on is recruitment, like how do we do that? How do we recruit people here? Hey, look at that. So recruitment is one of them, retention, right? If we're going to recruit somebody and spend the money to get somebody here, and then retain them here for long-term, and then also equipment, like get them the tools they need, like you saw in the video, like computers in the cars. Might not think of it as a big deal, but working out in the field, when you have to come back into the office to do reports and run subjects on the air, so like, for instance, they stop somebody and there's a lot of traffic on the radio, they have to wait to get their turn just to run somebody on the radio to see if this guy's wanted or not, or if he's a violent person or not, or they might just be a regular citizen, but they can't leave until they figure that out. It takes time. With a computer in the car, you can do that at your door, right inside your car, right? Do it safely. So those are tools that we can use, and then they'll have to come back later and run stuff in the office and go back and forth. There's a lot of advantages of the technology that's out there that we can use to help bring it in. So on the recruitment side, you know, officers come out here, they contact Gary often, Chief Crowell, and they're like, hey, I love your community, we might be relocating, there might be opportunities, but they're like, what do you got out here? And there, there's not a lot of recruiting tools. The salary is obviously the biggest thing. People want to be able to make a living. So right now, when we looked at the numbers, we are 30% below our neighboring agencies as far as pay goes. So I mean, I'm sure most people in this room worked at some point in time, whatever career occupation you might have had, but if somebody came to you and said, can you do this exact same job for me over here for 30% more? You or probably your significant other would tell you, you better take that opportunity for 30% more for doing the same job over here, and that's what's happening. We're losing people locally, even to Bear Valley, Tehachapi, but we don't have the opportunity to bring in more money into this community, right? Tehachapi, the city, Tehachapi, they got the 1% tax, sales tax increase, which brings more money into their community that's specifically geared towards law enforcement. So all of us in this room are paying for the Tehachapi Police Department because we're shopping at Walmart, Home Depot, Tractor Supply, everything we're doing, getting gas in there. We don't benefit from any of the businesses out here at all. We don't get any of that tax money out of these, the businesses that are here in Stallion Springs. So that's part of the equation, is like these other cities and counties, Kern County did it too, two years ago, right? They did the 1% sales tax for public safety, they got it, they're dumping a bunch more money. So they're in a position now where they can offer for, to Kern County Sheriff's Department, you get a $25,000 signing bonus if you go work for them. How do you compete with that, right? Then they're going to say, oh, and we're going to give you a take-home car, too. How do you compete with that? You know, if you live in Bakersfield or live here and you commute to Bakersfield, right? So there's a lot of perks that we can't offer here. What we can offer is a community that is safe, well, law enforcement is part of that equation, and also is a place where you feel like people are respecting and enjoy the fact that they live, the reason they've lived here is because it's safe, right? So the officers want to be here to work there. So that all comes in the part of the recruiting kind of bucket. And then when it goes to retention, you know, we recruit these people, and then it takes four to six months to get them hired. There's a background process. It's not like just going and applying to another, you know, local retail store. There's a thorough background process where they go talk to all your former neighbors, all your jobs you had, they have to do a polygraph test, a physical test, a psychological test, and that's to get them to the door to go to the academy, right? If we were to hire a new recruit, we'd go to the academy, the academy lasts six months. So now you're almost a year into investing into this person, right? A year's salary, almost, you know, and it takes a lot of money to get them to that point. Then they come out of the academy, and then they go to work in the field. So now you've got to take all the knowledge you learned in the academy and actually apply it in the field, which is, doesn't always translate. There's people that are very academic that do great in the academy, they get out to the field to deal with the problem or try to solve a problem or solution, and they just, it's just not for them. There's many times where officers come out and they're just like, this just isn't for me. So now all that money that's been invested in those officers, especially for a small district like ours, that's critical money, right? So we need to make sure we're getting the right people, they're coming here for the right reason, we've got the equipment onboard to support them in what they want to do as their careers, their chosen career is law enforcement. And then that comes to the retention part. So how do we keep them here once we get them here? So some, most of our officers, we've got from other agencies, like some of them are retired. I don't know if you know Sergeant Bonzin's, right? He and I worked together for years at the Sheriff's Office, and he retired, but now he's over here working because he still loves to do the job or be involved in law enforcement, which we're super thankful for because he's a, if you ever know about him, but I've got some, I got dirt on him, so I've got a lot of leverage with him. If he ever tries, if he tries anything, it's crazy, if one wants to leave, we're like, I don't think so. So, but that's how do we retain them? Well, you create a culture, Chief Crowell here in the Community Service District has created a culture here, like it's fun to work here, right? You get to have fun, the community members love us here, or love the law enforcement here, we love having them around, and some agencies or some guys have never got to experience that, depending if they worked at an agency where it was just a bigger agency, but coming here to kind of slow down, but still they bring all this institutional knowledge that they've had for working in a job for 20-plus years, and then they land here for maybe to ride out or retire from their current one job and come to another job to make another additional income, and then we benefit from that because we've got officers that are already, you know, already, there's a word I'm looking for, but it just, seasons, man, thank you. You may be my speechwriter next time. So, and I've seen what's happened with areas without police protection, right? We've had areas in this area, so even like in Tehachapi, in Golden Hills, those areas, I worked in those areas where we had a full substation for the last three years. They haven't had a substation there. They just opened the substation back up in Golden Hills, the Sheriff's Department did. They had one substation for everything from Caliente to Rosemont, yeah, working out of Mojave. They had three deputies working from Caliente to Rosemont. So if we don't have a police department here, do you think they're going to be able to come out here in a reasonable amount of time to come help us? Even now with the substation open, they have five deputies assigned to that substation, and two senior deputies and a sergeant. That's to cover seven days a week, 24 hours a day. This isn't the type of place where you just come cruise around Stallion Springs, right? There's, so there's going to be, they'll come to clean up a mess. If we don't have a law enforcement agency out here, people will start showing up out here, the criminal element, right? That's just, we just know that. If you don't have police presence, they're going to start showing up. And that just has all, you guys can all run down those bunny trails of what will happen with that. And I mean, we still deal with criminal element here with the police department. We're dealing with a small amount of number, but if you just double that number, if it's 1%, you double it to 2%, it's overwhelming, right? And the Sheriff's Office will not have the time to come out here and do proactive policing. They'll come out and do reactive. That means you're going to call in, and they're going to tell you, we'll come out tomorrow, or file an online report, or it's going to be a few hours. Right now, there's calls holding in Bakersfield where they have more officers for a whole day, for 24 hours sometimes, without even a call back from the Sheriff's Office. That's happening right now. Imagine if it was up here. So part of that study that we did, you know, we came up with the $275 a year, so this equals, yeah, so, I don't know, you do what you want to do with slides, I'll run them. Okay. So we had the, we came up with, as part of our strategic plan, it's like, what can we take to get at least us up to par, back up? So we used that 30%, so basically bumped everything up to be, hey, we can recruit officers with higher pay. We can use some of that money to invest in our equipment, get computers in the cars, get the technology that they need. There's a huge, I think it's $25,000 for the camera, the body cameras, isn't that the contract? So, yes. Yes, so they do, Chief Crowell's taken advantage of several grants, like for bulletproof vests and things like that, cameras, software, technology, but it's just, you have to use that for that, you can't use that for the employees. They're usually not, this SLF money, the SLF fund right here, the, it's a state law enforcement fund, it's a cops grant, basically, that's for, that's for salaries. We could use that, but that's not a guaranteed funding source. That could go down, it can go up. It just depends on what the state's, how generous the state might be, and we all know the state might not be generous at times. So that's, that is a portion, but that hardly pays, that doesn't even pay, I don't think, for a full salary of one of our officers, just that fund alone, right? But we do have grants, they search for grants all the time. It's a great question. They do, we do search for grants a lot, but a lot of them aren't towards personnel, but they're for equipment, which helps offset some of that, for sure. So that, we came up with, we looked at the numbers and like, okay, what can we do to sustain this for now, like fix this problem before we just completely lose our police department, right? As far as the staffing levels are really critical right now, and you've got like the Chief of Police, who should be more of an administrator, handling calls right now, right? If for some reason he got hurt or involved in some kind of incident, then we're even in worse luck, right? If any of our officers did. So we looked at $275 a year per parcel to increase that or add a tax, because it is, it does add, I don't know if you're going to speak to the 50, just combine them? I'll just go ahead and say that right now. I can be the bad guy. So we all pay a $50 tax right now, right, per year, and so we're adding the 275 as an addition to that. That $50 doesn't go away, so it's 325 really total, which the 275, which we started off is basically $22.92 a month, right? Somebody in the last meeting said it was 87 or 89 cents a day that we'd have to pay to keep our police department. So that's, that's, that's a doable thing, I think, I mean, for hopefully most everybody that's in the voting population. And this just goes to the parcel folks, people that own parcels, whether they live here or not, and that's one variable we don't know about, if they live here, like how they're going to receive this information. But $275 would get us to an additional like $600,000, which would put our budget up to about $1.4 million, which would be right below like what Bear Valley's at, at the 1.5 or something, or 2.4. So we're still well below their budget, they have more officers, they've got, that budget also would include a clerical support. So right now, we don't have anybody on the clerical side to help, like the Chief do, he doesn't have an administrator, right, to help with that. He's doing everything. They're writing reports, they're doing everything, they're filing, they have to take these report packages and send them to the DA's office to file a complaint. This can all be done with support staff. So we included that for a part-time clerical staff, just to help them to stay out in the field. That's the whole goal of that, is to keep them out in the field as much as possible so they don't have to sit in the office as much as possible, right? That's the goal, is to keep them out in the field and present, so they can be there when the buses are dropping kids off, so they can be there cruising around the neighborhoods. Think about it. Hold on to that. Yeah, okay. So that's kind of what we're, our goal is to shape, you know, a part-time clerical position, and then add the officers' pay up so we can recruit, and then retain folks, and recruit a better workforce, a police force, that we can have, just the staffing that we need to continue this on. If it doesn't pass, you're looking at probably this place closing down with, due to attrition, right? These guys are, you know, retiring, they're getting up there in age, you know, we have to start that succession planning now, we have to prepare for that now, for a few years from now on. And how long can you keep an officer who, like for Chief Crowell, he's going on-call, like he gets off his shift, he goes on-call, a couple hours later, he wakes up, gets somebody called in, comes back, you've got to come back to work. It's dangerous without having the support, right? Because if you're, once you're up, up about 18 hours, 18 hours plus, you're operating like you're under the influence, right? There's been a ton of studies that show that, that's why officers, you know, they crash on their way, in fact, it just happened in LA County. They just lost an officer that got in an accident on the way home. I don't know if it was sleep-related or not, but he's, he was working a lot of shifts, and it's happened here in Kern County, it's happened everywhere, every major local. We don't want that to happen to officers, right? Because it's liability for the district, right? If they get, if they crash or something, that puts more liability on the district, and they're going to pay out insurances, right? Insurance rates go up, then we also lose an officer because they're probably injured. So it is, there are, it's a dire straits kind of position we're in right now. So, yeah, so I think that's where our biggest focus was, was the 30%. That's how we came to the 275 number per year, per parcel, right? So it's 22.92 a month, basically, with probably a Kern County assessment, you know, tacked-on fees, processing fees, you know? But that's just kind of how we're operating right now. So we'll, and if you want to do my question, we'll talk at the end for questions, I'll just come back up if you want to, if anybody else has any questions, they come up.
Yes, thank you so much, Fred. Appreciate it. And I promise, we're going to have plenty of time for questions at the end, okay? So I wanted to kind of touch on this. This is the, for fiscal year 2425, the estimated operating budget, and if anyone has ever worked in a large department, you know, a budget is an estimate, right? So right here, you see the property tax budgeted by Stallion Springs CSD is $500,000. That is what is estimated would potentially need to be pulled out of the general fund to help pay for the police department at this time, okay? And then the existing police tax that generates roughly $122,000 a year, we talked about, that fluctuates also because, believe it or not, not everybody pays their property taxes, or a property is tied up in probate when the bills are due, something like that. So that does fluctuate a little bit. And then here's the SLEF, the cops fund, that is a grant through the state, and it's estimated to be coming in about $186,000, and then miscellaneous donations and grants, small grants and things like that. So I wanted to use an example here, and we talked about the estimation of the $500,000 that we would potentially have to pull out of the general fund. That's general property tax money, okay? That's used to fund the entire district, all eight departments. So an example from the 2324 budget year, we had the special tax, we had the SLEF, grants and donations all come in, it totaled approximately $335,659. Total expenditures for that year was $674,850. So about $339,340 had to come out of the general fund to cover the costs of the police department, and that is with the salaries that are currently in place at the 30%. And that is with the salaries that are currently in place at the thirty percent less that we talked about. That is too hard to read, so I'm skipping it. Plus, it's Gary's slide and he's not here, so, here we are. Okay, so what is a measure? Is a voter-approved ballot measure. Has to be approved by the voters. CSD staff doesn't get to just randomly put this on your property tax bill. It has to go to vote by law. It must pass with a two-third majority. Additional per parcel, per tax, police of two seventy-five, as Fred touched on. It would be billed on your property tax bill, so you pay every six months, right, December and April. So on each bill, it would be a hundred and thirty-seven fifty, on top of the fifty dollars that's already there. That stays in place. We cannot undo what's already been voted and passed. So the fifty dollars will stay there, because it already passed in twenty-seventeen. There is no consumer price index. That's your inflator. That's your inflation module. The Board of Directors and the, um, Public Safety Committee determined that, uh, that was not something that the community would embrace and probably would lower the chances of us passing this tax measure. So there is no CPI. It's estimated to generate approximately a hundred and sixty-five, or a hundred, excuse me, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. All money from this tax stays in Stallion Springs. Locally funded, locally controlled, no money is given to the state or federal government. The way that the Elections Department ha- runs, this cannot go on the ballot. The ballots will be mailed out on July twenty-eighth. They have to be in by August twenty-sixth, eight P.M. The Elections Department will start counting them. Because of that process and the way the property taxes are paid, funds will not show up in this district until the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, even if it passed today. So a lot of you have seen, we have some of them printed out over on the, uh, counter over here. It's also available on our website. We've been doing a community survey questionnaire. Some of those results I wanted to share with you, um, a hundred and eight of them were returned at the time this slide was created. Thirty-two people said absolutely not, they would not support a parcel tax. Seventy-six said yes that they would, and out of the hundred and eight, a hundred and six people felt safe in Stallion Springs. And I wanna do, also, say, we do not ask for your name, we do not know your address, we don't, we know absolutely nothing about you if you fill out that survey. So, we wanted everybody to feel super comfortable. So what will the funds be used for? All special tax funds by law must be used for the police department. So we can't charge a special police tax and use it for park and recreation, water, trash. We can't use it for any other department by law. It will preserve local police services, allow us to be competitive, offering high, good hiring packages for recruitment and retention, purchase essential tools, equipment and technology, ensure reliable, around-the-clock protection. And the, uh, Public Safety Committee, um, has, has, we got some dedicated volunteers on that committee. I can't thank you enough. If you were in this room, we couldn't be doing this without you. Um, but they have chosen, they said that if this passes, they will stay on and they will meet annually as a neutral oversight committee to double-check and triple-check that we are using the funds in a responsible manner. And if we go back to some of the prior slides, we do get audited annually by a neutral third-party auditor. And that was just in the March Board Packet, so if you go to our website and you go to the March Board Packet, you can view the audit. So again, ballots will go out on July twenty-eighth, and I wanna really kind of emphasize something. We do have a question on the community questionnaire, would you support a tax? That is not your vote. You will receive an official ballot from the Kern County Elections Department in your mailbox, if you are a registered voter. So I just want everybody to understand, please, if you filled out the questionnaire and you marked yes, please fill out your ballot a- as well, because this, this is just for us gathering data. It's not an official ballot. Okay, the time you guys have all been waiting for. Q and A. So Jason is gonna be, so, oh, Mandy! Give it up for Mandy, everybody. She's one of our wonderful recreation aides and works very hard for the community. She's gonna walk around with a microphone, so everybody can hear your question.
So, the, let me... I understand. So, we have, so Gary, or Chief Crowell, isn't, uh, a fan of putting out any numbers, but just so you know, right now, because of the, the element that's still out there that we don't want them to recognize, this, the actual staffing numbers. So just so you know, though, right now, your service doesn't change at all. We have twenty-four-seven coverage by the, the, the officers that are working now, but it's on, based on their availability, not on their availability, but their, how are you gonna get the response? They're gonna work their ten or twelve-hour shift, then they'll go on-call. So if there's a call out here, dispatch will wake them up, so that, our dispatch, we use the sheriff's office for dispatch. So, you'll call in there, they'll call whoever's on-call, and then they'll wake them up, and they'll respond. Or they might give you a phone call. Maybe it's a, somebody parked in front of my house is suspicious at midnight, and then you call it in, and they call you back, "Oh, they just left," that kinda thing, right? They might, they might make that call. So, there will be someone available to you twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Just a different form. They might show up in person, they could give you a phone call, or they might, you know, it might be a, you know, "We'll come out tomorrow," right, for whatever case may be. Correct. So there's a good response on... There, so there's a good res- uh, yes, do they all repeat, do they all live here? Is what she asked. So, uh, yes, they are local, so that's really a benefit to us, right? We're gonna, we don't want someone on-call in Bakersfield, right, that this doesn't fly. Um, so, but that's part of the recruiting process, too, right? It's like trying to get local people, for sure. Anybody, question, more questions? We got, we'll get to it in a second. I have a couple of questions. Um... Hi, my name's Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Hey, Fred. Fred? Um, do we have reserve officers?
No.
Okay. We have the ability, the, and I'll just expand on that. So to have reserve officers, you need to have training officers. Currently, our officers, uh, either want to, they are, uh, not certified through post, which is this, the police standards and training for the state, to have an FTO program.
Right.
So that's what you need to have, reserves and over, when new people come on board.
Understand. I, I come from public safety.
Guys.
Um, upgrading our technology, which I'm all for. Do we currently have, or do we hope to get, um, radar? And are, are, do we currently have it, and are our officers trained in the use of it?
Yes, so they do have radar. They've been trained in it. That's what they use for speed right now. But, but that did, did you get a ticket or something, sir? I know, I, I know, I just heard, I just replayed it back about the speed, right? Um, so they, uh, they do have it, um, and they are trained to use it. And then now it becomes, how many times are tied away to where they actually can go enforce it, right? That's just a, a timing thing because of the staffing.
So with the upgrade in funding, are we going to upgrade our personnel and add more people?
Yes.
Because, as this gentleman right here, Chuck Olai Two, will tell you, being retired, I watch my neighborhood and it's a freeway.
Correct.
And it's a great concern.
Absolutely.
And I've had it out with it, well.
Yeah. Yeah, and I get that. I, it's frustrating. I, I understand that. I mean, I worked in agencies where I worked, I was a motor officer for a while, and, uh, for six years, that's what, all we did was work complaints, right? So I, I get that part of it, but you have to have the staffing to do it. All those extra jobs that police departments have, like the bigger agencies with motors and gangs and narcotics and all these other units, we have the basic, fundamental patrol service, and they try their best to get what they can get done during their day with all the different distractions they have, so... Uh, great questions, though. Great questions.
There's a gentleman right... Parcel tax. If you have two parcels that are joined, is that, you gonna pay the tax twice or once?
So if you own two parcels and you've done a lot line adjustment, so you have one APN number, that would be one. If you have not done a lot line adjustment and merged the two, and you have two separate lots, that would be two.
Has there been any thought of, um, maybe resurrecting or... I, I'm sorry, my name is Maureen Landry.
Hi, Maureen.
We've been here for four years and we absolutely love Stallion Springs, um, and Tehachapi. Uh, and I'm wondering if there's any, been any thought of either resurrecting or instituting a volunteer police, uh, addition to the police department, but also at, getting volunteer police? Because I know the police officers are overwhelmed. I, no doubt about it. But could the poli- a volunteer sit in a quote-unquote patrol and monitor speeding on a street that, and report that in where, to a police officer? I don't know if that's even a possibility.
Right, and, and sure...
But I'm just asking if that is a way of maybe cutting down on the number of police, additional police officers that we would need? Or if it would be, I don't know. It was just a thought I had.
No, and, and thank you for that thought, and, and yes is the short answer, but it would be in the future. Because you have, they have to be supervised. So you have to have the staffing at a level where you can allow someone to, you can spare them, if you will, the time to be the supervisor of the volunteers, right? So it's kind of a spider web, if you will, yes. A reserve or a volunteer, yeah. But ideally, down the road, absolutely would be the answer to, to that.
Hey, guys, tomorrow you're gonna sit out there, 'cause all you're gonna do is say, "Hey, yeah, I think somebody's speeding," 'cause I'm not certified by radar, to tell somebody's speeding, and then you're just gonna be able to tell, "Hey, there's a black car that went down the road," and you're gonna have to tell the police that they were speeding, which they can't go enforce that, because it's an infraction. There's a whole, there's a whole craziness behind it all, you know, without running too far down into the weeds. But, uh, that's a great idea for the reserve program, which would be great, if we could get to that level, for sure. But they'd have to go through training. There's a, there's a certain amount of training.
Hi, I have a question on the, uh, fifty-dollar tax. I'm trying to remember when that was implemented, and does it have an expiration that you voted in again after every so many years? Or am I getting that mixed up with something else?
Um, no, that's, that's a good question. Um, it was voted in, uh, passed in twenty-seventeen, and it, no, it will stay. Now, there are special taxes, um, that can have, you know, expiration dates or certain, uh, parameters around them. I believe that there was, and this is gonna be before my time, so I hope I'm not misquoting any history, but I believe when this building was built, uh, there was a special tax. But then, once the building is completed and paid, then it drops off. Circumstances like that can occur in some incidents, but with the fifty dollars that was passed in twenty-seventeen, no. Once it's been voted in, we, we can't take it away. It said administrative police building, so yeah, you're correct, sir.
I, I live on St. Andrews and Vanaducci, right there on the corner. And I can't say more than what he said, except I was almost hit on that corner, and I was crossing legally. And if I'm in the street, anywhere I am is legal according to law. If you wanna make enough revenue to help our city, take the time to put one of your men on that corner, because the one I saw was sit, sitting right in front of a, uh, mailbox, right there in the first front Stallion Springs opening. I walked, drove right up, maybe I was speeding, I don't know, but he was right there. I knew immediately, slow down. He was right out in the open. I volunteer my fence on the corner of Vanaducci and St. Andrews, or if they wanna sit in my backyard and put their radar over the fence, I'm good with that, because it is a way to raise revenue. And I understand that police are limited, but if you wanna get more police and you wanna retain them, you better get the money. And just asking these folks for money, we know what happened with the roads. It didn't go through. And that could happen here. So you better look for other ways to find revenue, and I guarantee you, that corner, huh, that whole street is like a freeway. I mean, you know, I've seen dogs almost hit, deer hit, I, as a person, I kinda like my life. I fought cancer. I'd like to live for a long, lot, longer, and I won't if I cross the street. I, you know, I took my dog for a walk the other day and I was afraid, and he's a rottweiler. And I was afraid, because if someone came around that corner too fast, I have to cross diagonally to make sure I don't get hit. So, to me, you wanna make revenue, that's a great corner to do it on. You got my backyard as a dedicated place you can be and looking over that fence.
Yeah, I'm sure we'd have a lot of volunteers for that, for sure. A lot of, so, as far as like the citation money, doesn't always come, that, we don't get, come, it doesn't come back to us. So it's not like a, uh, a gener- a revenue generating thing. If you have like a municipal codes, like, section like the cities have, if you cite one of those, that money comes back to the, to the cities. It goes to the court processing fees, it goes, it goes all these different places, but here, basically. You might get a little bit back in something, but there's a lot of things that we, that we're saving a lot of. Chief Crowell's done a great job with building relationships with, like, the sheriff's office, so like, right now, like, someone to jail, um, we don't have to pay booking fees. Every other agency has to pay the sheriff's department, but, so it saves money, and then plus, they also, um, can rely on dispatching, too. We don't pay for that, which is, that's a huge cost. Uh, so there are things where we're saving. If we had to pay for everything, like Bear Valley's budget, two point four million, 'cause they have their own dispatchers and things like that, you know, we're, we're completely out of, uh... Oh, absolutely, absolutely. That's why I live here. Here's the money.
Answer. No, I don't need an answer.
Well, we're, we're recording this, so it's, people can hear.
Okay, so, if you were to increase your revenue, this, besides that amount, there's gonna be a cost every year thereafter, is that correct?
We, we're not a... We don't create revenue here.
Well, let's not take revenue out. That's even worse. You have no revenue and yet your costs are gonna increase. Come on, there's a cola. Of course it's gonna increase. By the way, my name's Lori Baxer. Anybody wants to go that round, Finn? So, uh, you know, the bottom line is, how do you do that? Because you're asking these people to pay a certain amount of money. Now, I get it. I get it. I'm not gonna tell you I'm not gonna be one of those people at eighty-nine cents a day who's not gonna get safety, although I do have that rottweiler. But I am gonna say that, for instance, I was the one who went to the city, this about killed me when I first moved in four years ago, and I looked out my door and the twenty-five mile an hour sign that's supposed to be on that corner where they speed, it was behind a giant, uh, elec- electric pole. And I had to go down and say to them, "How smart is that? That you would put a twenty-five mile an hour sign behind an electric pole where it can't be seen, and yet no police officer reported that. I did, and apparently it had been that way a long time." I just was stupid enough to move in and point it out. It's frustrating.
Yeah. Very questions. Thank you for those comments, too. Yeah, good. Good, good, good. They're coming.
Uh, I just had a quick question, though. We're... Hello? Uh, given the fact that we do have local businesses that are operating inside of our local community, are they gonna be paying a little bit more compared to us, us being asked to pay more for that?
I believe it's just the parcel tax. Whoever owns the property the businesses are on. We don't get any... We don't get any-
Like, the owner of P-Dub doesn't own the property that he's on, he's obviously on a lease, I'm assuming?
I don't know, I think he might own that property, um, and it's all public records information, you can find that out, but-
Sorry, I just thought I could clarify something, so, so it is a per parcel. So if your parcel is a quarter acre or two acres, you're currently paying fifty dollars. And then if this passes, you would pay an additional two seventy-five. It's not based on the size of the property or, or the zoning of the property. Does that answer your question? Yeah, okay. Yep, put your hands up, somebody knows to bring you the microphone.
Hi, my name's Tim. Um, I just had a question of, if we're trying to make up a thirty percent deficit, why is the tax going up six hundred percent? And it seems to me at a bare minimum, that means that before we moved here, there was very poor planning, and I'd like some assurance that the planning is better at this time.
So that's part of the reason we, we formed the Public Safety Committee, is so that the residents of Stallion are involved in the process and helping us do the research that we need to do to do that planning that you're referring to. Um, and, and yes, and I, and I wasn't here, I've only, I've been here a year and a half. Um, I don't believe we have anybody on the Board of Directors that has been here more than, I think somebody's maybe in the middle of their second term, which would mean about seven years served. Um, and, um, yes, you are correct. I, I don't know if there was a fear to ask the community for assistance, I don't know what the reasoning behind that was. Um, but at one point, they did feel strongly enough to go to the voters in 2017 for the fifty dollars. Um, my understanding, and I think Brad touched on this a little bit, that they did try to go out to the voters, uh, for a higher amount, and it failed. And then they went back to the voters and the fifty dollars passed.
The, uh, the, the formula worked out differently back then, too, because the, the pay in salaries, housing, all those things were so much lower, then all of a sudden, all the pays just started jumping up, and people were like, why do I stay here, I can go do the other? But I get that, there was, there was no prior, the prior planning part, all we can do is like draw the line in the sand now and say, we need to do something now, and move forward and make it smarter in the future. We don't know. We really don't know. We really don't know. But in two years from now, without a police department, think about what that might look like. So there's a, there's a big, yeah, it is, it is. And, you know, I think, uh, the communities we're saving, right? And that's how we're gonna do it.
Hi, I'm Leslie Charle, I live in San Joaquin, and I'm very, I was very excited when we moved here that there was, um, our own local police department. I'm excited about keeping a local police department. My only concern is timing, and the reason they say that is because government funding is being slashed right and left. And when we're looking at two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, it looks to me like it's based on old, tried and true funding. My concern is that we're going and we're saying, okay, to the two seventy-five now, only to find out in a year or two, maybe even three, that the government has slashed funding for police. And now, we're back to where we were. So, part of me is thinking, nobody wants to pay more, but part of me is thinking, aren't we almost jumping the gun unless we do plan on making it an incremental increase or contingent upon whatever the government does, follow what I'm saying?
Correct, yeah, so the government-
That concern, it's like, what's it gonna be next year?
So, the, the money you're talking about that we get from the government, right? Everything is, is basically self-generated, right? It's this tax, us using the money for ourselves. Oh, the man of the hour! Oh, man! So yes, we could like, for your example, if they cut that off, one hundred eighty-six thousand gone. However, if we offset that with the six hundred and fifty thousand, that this vote would increase, we can take that hit a little bit better, and then we're not relying, relying on the government to help us out, basically. Because we're a sp- uh, the Special Service District, it's a unique thing, it's, I'm learning so much about it, you know, we're not in any position that we can just start the one percent sales tax on something like the cities and counties can do, right? Like I said before, I mean, we're paying for all these other agencies, and we're not getting any benefit from it. Do you wanna add to that?
I was just gonna make a quick comment, that in, in reality, we're actually better off that we don't rely so heavily on the government's funding, because we don't, because we don't rely on the government's funding so heavily, we're not gonna take that hit so, so heavily. It just doesn't get us.
Right, I mean, it, it's a double-edged sword, right? We would love to be able to get some of that money, but legally, we, illegally, we can't collect sales tax and things like that, so, it, it, but at the same time, to your point, then it, we're a little more self-sufficient and, and self-sustainable, right? So, looking at this chart here, again, the existing parcel tax will, cannot go away. It was voted in by the residents, it is on the tax roll. Um, the, the only thing that we could maybe possibly see go away would be the one eighty-six, one fifty-nine. Does that answer your question, ma'am? Yeah, and I think the Public Safety Committee discussed that for hours. Where, where, where's that spot, right? What do we ask for that we feel confident that may, hopefully the voters would embrace and pass? Um, and, and what's, you know, where's that balance? What's enough, right? Um, but to Fred's point, if it does pass, it's estimated to generate an additional six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So if the one eighty-six goes away, we're still ahead. We still have more than we have today. So I think that that was kind of the thought process behind it.
Um, I have, uh, just a couple of questions. Woodward pays the same amount then, that each of our parcels pay?
Yes, so Woodward is multiple parcels. There, there are multiple parcels.
Okay.
So they will, yes, each, it's, again, it's attached per parcel. So if you own five parcels that are all separated throughout, you're gonna pay five times. If you pay, if you own one, you're gonna pay one, yeah.
Cause I had heard that-
It's a per parcel tax.
I had heard that Woodward was one huge-
No.
Thing, okay. Then the other one, and I think, uh, they're, they're combined, um, is crime up here? And I remember when we first moved up here twenty-five years ago, that we used to be able to drop in and say hello to our police, and now we're lucked out unless we knock at the door. Are they all, are they all, yes, are they-
That's a perfect segue, let me introduce Chief Crowell.
Hello, everyone. Uh, sorry, I'm a little jittery, just came from a call, I haven't eaten anything, uh, so bear with me, probably a little hangry, but I'll bear, you guys are very polite. So to answer your question, um, we are available twenty-four hours a day. The reason why we've had to make some changes is, an industry standard currently is to have administrative secretary that's trained to, to handle those type of calls, because there's a lot of confidential information that comes to the police department every day, fair to say? We have never had one in the history of our department. We've got some volunteers that have kinda quasi-done that. The front office staff has been nice enough to fill in that role. But again, oftentimes, they're getting a lot of frustrations from the community for a lot of varying reasons. Weed spraying, speeding, dogs defecating in yards, whatever it may be, the front office staff is getting the brunt of it, and we're trying to consolidate that, because oftentimes people come into our office and they start dumping up whatever the, the issue is, police issue. They're not trained or have the capabilities of, of getting that information to us properly. So that's where we came up with the telephone system, is you can leave a message, it comes to us, and we will respond when we can. Now again, things have obviously gotten busier here. Uh, you, you don't see it on a day-to-day, I encourage everyone in this room to look at our monthly statistics that we have in our board package. Again, it may not be to the numbers that you want it to be, but you're going to see that there's definitely things that are happening in this community. Sadly, with my current staffing, not including just the call that me and my sergeant went to, we're down eight reports right now. That is, and sadly, a lot of investigative work. So you have to look at it as, sometimes you may not see us driving around like you once did, and again, it's just that it's sheer numbers. But there's a tremendous amount that goes into an investigation. And, uh, last week, my sergeant boss, our, our champion of Stallion Springs out here, really is the gem of Kern County, and I, and again, I welcome everyone to look into those things. He got a individual, uh, on Stallion Springs Drive who had drugs with his child in the car. Again, this is nothing really complex, but how long, on average, do you think an investigation from stop to arrest, taken to jail, and them completing the report, how long do you think that's gonna take? Six hours? Eleven hours? Now, he went to Mojave, which is thirty minutes, forty minutes away from us, got rejected from the, from the jail, and then had to go to Laredo where we take our prisoners. Everyone in Kern County takes their, their arrestees to Laredo, which if, for those who don't know where Laredo is, it's on the other side of Bakersfield, another fifteen to twenty minutes out. So again, just for driving time, if everything goes smoothly, you're looking at about three hours. Not including the booking process, talking to a, a nurse, all of those things. Again, I assisted him on my day off, this is my day, I think day twelve now. He called me on my day off, I helped him because he needed assistance, his backing unit didn't get here in twenty-seven minutes. So again, the question, again, I know it's a long-winded thing, is we're always available, I will always make time for you. Unfortunately, just because of the needs and just trying to do the day-to-day, it may be longer than you've ever anticipated, because again, we like, like to have that open-door policy. We are just another part of the community, just like you. You're always welcome, please give me an email, telephone, message, whatever it may be, but we are here for you twenty-four hours a day. Again, we may not be on duty twenty-four hours a day, but again, if you're having a plumbing issue or electrical issue, is that person coming to your house within twenty minutes? Again, our response time is two minutes when we're on duty. If we're on call, yeah, it's gonna take fifteen to twenty minutes, because we are here. But that's still exceptional. Generally, for this, for other agencies, you're looking, depending on what agency, I'm not gonna go into it, it could take anywhere from five to twenty-five minutes in this area, or even longer. Did that answer your question? Very long-winded, of course.
Okay, any more questions? It's still Q and A time, go ahead, Mandy.
I just had one, and I think I know the answer, but I just wanna confirm. Should at some point, the police department be disbanded? Because the voters didn't vote it in, whatever, it's going up too much, nobody agrees, whatever, um, is it a fact that that will drop off of our property taxes, and now we will be dealing with Kern County and however they're gonna charge for their sheriffs? Or would it be folded into whatever we're gonna need from Kern County now?
So that's a very complicated answer, because there's a lot of circumstances that would have to line up for it to be one answer, okay? So I'm gonna try to give you some options, different scenarios of what could possibly happen. Um, again, we can't undo what the voters have already voted on, okay? So, we have, all of our departments that we run, they are governed to us under the authority of LAFCO. LAFCO is a local agency formation commission at the county level. That is the commission that decides what services we are required to provide to our community, and what services we're not. And like you saw in the beginning of the video, right? For example, uh, Golden Hills provides water, one department. Rosemont, CSD, water and sewer, two departments, okay? So, under the LAFCO's power, they call them our powers, kind of a strange word, but they call them our powers, if we run out of funding and we cannot provide that required power any longer, we would have to go before LAFCO and petition that they remove that power from us, okay? If they do not, by law, we are still required to provide some form of law enforcement to the community, by law. So what does that look like? Is that bringing in some type of private law enforcement agency? Is that, uh, contracting with the sheriff's department? Um, you know, what does that look like? And then, if LAFCO does say, sure, we're gonna let, we're gonna allow you to disband and get rid of that power, then we would most likely just be unincorporated Kern County, and they would provide the service as they are able. Does that help? I know, it's complicated. It's super complicated. That would be up to the county of Kern, I don't know. Go ahead, Gary.
Another interesting thing to note is, the, the county, even though they went and passed a, a measure, there are nine million dollars in debt just for this fiscal year, up to fifty million dollars. A lot of it was due to the weather, being reimbursed by the state and federal government. So again, really, this measure is a life preserver for the police department, and only you, our constituents, get to make the decision on what you choose, what you want to do for your community. We can't really go into the, the other things of what may or may not happen, it's just we wanna obviously educate you, so you make a, a good judgment based on all the facts. But you have to also look at it as, yes, staffing is improving at the sheriff's department, and in fact, in fact, I lost one of my officers two weeks ago to the sheriff's department. They are over budget and are having significant issues, so how long are they gonna be able to staff the way they are improving currently? That's, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't really project those things. Uh, again, state of California, they're saying there are fifty billion dollars in debt. Again, the money that from this tax is local, it's local-controlled, locally funded, it doesn't go to the state or federal government, I'm sure they've already spoke about those things. Uh, again, Bear Valley Springs are, are, you saw the numbers there, their numbers are two point five millions, three times the amount of mine, and they're going, doing the exact same process we're doing. We're just front, first to the table. It's just an unfortunate thing, because again, how many police departments in the state of California, community service districts, do you remember? Five. It's really a bad model, right? As, as much as I'd hate to say it, but again, these communities thought, really ahead of their time, of we wanna try to provide a higher level of service, but really didn't think about the complexities of the funding source. So, really, and, and I know it's very confusing, it's either you get free calls for service, and there's no active patrolling, there's no one coming to the bus stop, they're only responding if they're, they're getting a call for service, and they may be forty-five minutes out. You're not going to, they're not going to medical aid calls. Again, these are services that we are providing for you. As the budget you've seen today, at eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, it is not enough to cover a contract as of now, unless you have maybe one officer or two. So again, that is something that the community service district would have to have negotiations with, or even looking for another entity to try to provide those services. But again, you know, sometimes people look at us as a cost-cutting measure, yeah, I, I understand that. But the fact of the matter is, if we go to LAFCO or if we do something, this whole formula changes. You may or may not, that, the money that go, comes from SLEF, the, the state law enforcement fund, that may or may not go to the county. Again, the fifty dollars, what does that really entail? There's a lot of complexities that we can't really answer, because we're not really there yet. But again, it comes down to, how much is that gonna now cost the district to go through that process? There's a lot of unknowns there as well.
Okay, if I, uh-
Does that make sense, I'm sorry? Does that make sense? I know it's very complex as far as contracts and response, and I try to explain it as best as I can. Us in government, we get it, and I, if you have some time, I could explain it a little bit more in detail. But again, it's, you're basically paying for a service. When the sheriff's department comes here, they're assuming the liability for law enforcement services, just like we are. We are just trained professionals, just like you, we're just- we are. We are just trained professionals, just like you. We're just citizens that have the authority from the state of California, that's it. But you have a local a- agency that's handling that, a hundred, a, a, as it is right now, a hundred and sixty thousand per officer, where the sher- sheriff's department gave a quote to Bear Valley Springs for two-point-five million, which is basically the equivalent of two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand per deputy, per officer. Right? Yes?
All right. Hi, folks. My name's Bill Cyvison, and I'm leading a advocacy group, uh, here within Stallion to try to get this vote passed, uh, to try to get the word out to many people that, that aren't aware of it. I have spoken with Chief Standridge, who is the chief of the Hatchbee Police Department, and he is sympathetic to what's going on here. He is aware of it, but Hatchbee Police cannot help us, period. Uh, Golden Hills went to them and asked, "Hey, can we contract with you?" We can't. We can't do it because of a lot of complexities of where the money goes. Uh, the county would have to give up whatever money we give the county, would have to go to the city police, and that's just not happening. So, the only time you'll see the police or deputies out here is this mutual aid thing. They will come if they need help. The sheriff are here, and we don't pay for that. It's mutual. If the sheriff needs help in Golden Hills, the chief and Spike will go help. There's no cost. But if we lose our police department, and you're expecting the Kern County sheriff to patrol here, they aren't. They will, if you call nine-one-one, they'll dispatch a deputy if it's like a priority one. Your life is in danger. Your life's in imminent danger. They'll dispatch a deputy, and that deputy could be coming from Hart Flat, Sand Canyon, Cameron Road, you don't know where. They're thirty, forty minutes away if they're available. You've only got five deputies and two senior deputies to cover seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. So, again, they'll come and help with swatter whatever they need. That's free. If they're gone, it's no longer free. I've had a conversation with, um, a gentleman in the Kern County Administrative Office. He is the director of Budget and Finance for Kern County, and I'm gonna see him again tomorrow. He has said that he can try to give me a really rough order of magnitude quote, "What if we had to contract with a sheriff's office?" Make some assumptions, give me a range, mid to high, and I'll get that out to you. It's not gonna be exact, but it's gonna give you kind of a flavor of, you can, we can do the two-seventy-five a year per parcel, or quite a bit more. Either way, if, if we have to go with the sheriff's deputies, we're gonna have to pay for it, and it's gonna be more than the two-seventy-five.
Mandy, this gentleman over here in the dark green has been waiting very patiently to ask a question.
My name is Ray Revolo, and I just wanna be thankful to the sheriffs, because to me, I moved from Long Beach two, two years ago, to this beautiful city of Stallion Springs. And let me tell you, it is as safe as can be. I live in a very nice neighborhood in Long Beach, but doesn't compare, not even, there is, you can't even compare it to how we live here. I can walk out here at night, anywhere I want, drive my car, do whatever I want, and it's as safe as it gets. But I know that, when I first got here, there was a road assessment thing that's going, like, what was going on now, that didn't pass. And when we got the envelope, we didn't even know what it was. I didn't even open it, just, we get so much junk mail. So it's important, I think, that, that we do everything we can, that we talk to our neighbors, because we need our police department. We really, really do, because let me tell you what, folks. I was a Parks Bureau manager for the city of Long Beach, and I ran the parks, landscaping, beaches. I did it all. But let me tell you one thing, without our police officers, your properties and all your issues are gonna go up, and you're gonna be wishing to God that they never left. So once you lose them, it's gonna be three times the cost to get them back. That's just the way life goes. I've seen it with my own eyes, as a thirty-year member for the ci- for, uh, Long Beach City, which is a huge city. Uh, we contracted on the ninth district with sheriffs. Guess what? In two years, we went back because their costs were just, we couldn't afford the sheriffs. We have great officers. I know that two-seventy-five seems like a lot, but think about it, we're paying a hundred and thirty dollars right now for road assessment, which, in my eyes, is not enough. But if we lose these guys, and if you have to deal with the sheriffs, you're gonna be wishing and hoping that we never lost someone like Chief Crowell.
Anybody else have any questions?
Um, it, you said that, uh, you'd like to get new computers for the cars, which sounds really reasonable. Does that mean new cars, and if you get new cars, won't that take away from the salaries for the cops that you're trying to get?
Yes. Short answer. Um, so, you know, your, your vehicles, they only have so much of a lifespan, right? So, down the road, that, there's gonna be a need for vehicle replacements. Um, the computers, they, not only, not, it's not only the equipment, but it's the cost of the software and the access to the systems that are very expensive as well. So, um, that's gonna be all about budgeting, and that's gonna be about the Community Oversight Committee, making sure, you know, where are our priorities? What needs to happen right now? Um, so, you know, everything has a life, and, and equipment, unfortunately, technology changes really rapidly. Um, so, yeah, i- i- it, it's gonna be about good planning and, and long-range planning. Yes, sir.
My name is Bill. I'd like to know, who pays for the retirement of the police officers?
Yeah, so that's all within the CalPERS system. You pay into that system throughout your employment, and then that is part of a overall budget. All of our employees, all of our full-time employees, I should say, are under CalPERS.
For the officers when they retire through Stallion Springs?
So, the, the numbers that I quoted earlier, so the, the two, two-sixty-six from the sheriff's department, and ours is a hundred and sixty-six, okay, that's the whole package. Now, again, you can look, look at everyone's salary and everything on Transparent California. Please, look at it. I'm getting paid thirty percent discounted. Look at it, please. What that includes, that whole number, is pay, benefits, equipment, and car. That's the magic number. So again, the sheriff's department, when they're looking at a quote, they go, "Okay, this is how much we need for retirement, for, for pay, and for those other fringe benefit type of things." So that's all compounded. So, currently, the Community Service District, per our budgeting, with the general manager and I, we are paying that, and again, it does go up. Again, like we've mentioned, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, we did not include that because we got some feedback from our residents that that was like a, a, a no vote automatically. Now, the reason why you have CPIs in, in, in there, the inflator, is you can have cost-of-living adjustments and things like that built in. Again, with this quote that we're doing for this vote, that's not included, because again, this is gonna be a razor-thin margin to get this passed. But again, we don't want you to think, "Okay, well, they're gonna raise it four percent this year, and the next year, and the next year after." Again, that was up to you, the constituents, with that Public Safety Committee and the Community Service District, to see if that needed to be kicked in. Well, again, that's not-
No. Stallion Springs, when an officer retires, do we have to continue to contribute to their retirement?
No.
Or is it just through CalPERS?
So, once you, once the officer pays, okay, it goes into the kitty, and the Community Service District pays that as well. Once the officer retires, that retirement is now part of the CalPERS system, and they get paid with their retirement through that. So the Community Service District no longer pays into the retirement once someone is gone.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Any more questions?
Uh, basic response, we have an AED, uh, CPR, uh, we actually have saved some lives from that. Uh, we're just basic responders. Generally, uh, historically, we have not had the, the fire department here full-time, but we've probably had them here full-time for, I would estimate, last ten years, eight years. So, we kinda help them. Now, when they're on fires or they're outside the area, we're the first ones to respond, especially if there's like a traffic collision or, or things of that nature. So, it's just basic response. But again, with a head injury, or someone's going through a stroke, or a seizure type of thing, generally, we're the first one on feet. When, with the caveat, when we're on call. And again, if we're on another call, obviously we can't respond, so I just wanna make sure that's clear as well.
Hey, anybody else? Any more questions? Okay, so if you're like me, and you leave here, and in twenty minutes, you think of your question, um, you are more than happy to, to email me. Um, my email address is gm@stallionspringscsd.com. If I know the answer, I will respond to you. If I don't, I'll forward it to Chief, uh, but we will respond. Um, again, there are questionnaires and some information at the table. Uh, I think in closing, Chief maybe has one more comment.
So I wanna say thank you for, uh, all coming out and being educated on this. Again, it's irrelevant if you're for or against it, we just want you to, to make the best decision for you and your families. Again, try to share this with your friends, neighbors, everyone who lives in the community, and encourage them to come to this meeting to get those facts. Uh, a point of when Bill was so nice enough to, to stand up and, uh, basically address you as, uh, a group, how long do you think that took? How long ago was that? It's been ten minutes. There's a clock right over there. We don't even have backup for another fifteen minutes. You don't even have another officer for another fifteen minutes if you're relying on someone else. Just something to think about.